I'd like to call the city council meeting to order and invite everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with all liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phil, could we have roll call?
Craig Trushaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
And Owen Gann.
Here.
Got them.
Here.
I know. Wiley, sir.
Here. You're gonna hang on to them and we'll be that way again here soon.
I know.
So I guess everyone's here, huh?
Everyone's here.
You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our February 5th meeting. I'd look for motion to either approve or amend those minutes. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes from our May 5th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First thing we have is council's review of the annual CF-1 report for AB Cinema and their tax abatement for real estate and personal property. And I think Barb Affolder has already been in City Hall and given everything to Phyllis.
And everything looks in compliance. Here's the estimated. This is what was estimated on the SF-1 form when the original filled out. It was six full-time, fourteen part-time, and they have six full-time and ten part-time. And additional employees, five part-time.
And they are fully in compliance. So as we look through these, we review the following CF-1 and find that either the property owner is in substantial compliance, is not in substantial compliance, or other. And I would have to say it looks to me like they are in substantial compliance. So with that said, I'd look for motion to...
I make a motion to approve any substantial compliance?
Second. I have a motion and a second for the okay of approval of the CF-1 for their real estate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then I have another one here for their personal property. And basically it's the same thing. Let me just, yeah. So again, I'd look for another motion on that. So moved.
Okay.
Motion and a second to approve the CF-1 for AB Cinema's personal property. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Phil, I'll sign those later. I just realized a little bit ago, I didn't come in and sign any claims today. Okay, thank you. Next thing we have is, which need to make a matter of record, we received our invoice from Adams County Economic Development Corporation for their invoice for our annual fees to help fund Adams County Economic Development. This invoice is one of two payments that we'll make. This one here's for $21,933.21. And that is, I believe, thirteen percent of our seed at funds. Sound correct?
Six and a half percent of our seed at funds.
Six and a half percent.
Well, that's after the, that's six and a half, it's thirteen percent of what we keep.
Huh.
Fifty percent goes to the hospital.
Okay. Fifty percent of it goes to the hospital, what's left?
Well, of our whole seed distribution, they get thirteen percent.
Of the distribution? The whole?
But you're saying you're adding on, but I'm just going by our portion.
Right.
Our portion of the distribution. Hosgill gets half of our half.
Right, right.
Thirteen percent of our half.
So of the entire amount?
It's six and a half percent of the entire amount, yeah. Good point. Okay. Need to make this a matter of record and I will okay for Phyllis to pay.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to okay the annual fee for the service agreement for Adams County Economic Development Corporation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Trevor, were you supposed to sign this?
Uh...
There's a place on there for you to sign it.
I can't. I think you sent it back in the night.
Okay, alright, gotcha. Alright. That's that. It's called the Seed Dispersment. Well, while we have an audience here, let's go ahead and talk about the letter that I received from Scott Ainsworth. I sent all of the council members a copy of that letter. I just wish I could find it. Here's a copy. Right here, yes, I got it. I'm not gonna read it, you've all read it, and it's in reference to the Northwest Elementary School and North Adams Schools offering that to us as a gift. And they can do that because the Northwest Elementary property was part of the city's, where are we even here? It was a school-city of Decatur. Because North Adams acquired that parcel from the school, city of Decatur, in consolidation in the 1960s. There's Indiana Code that requires North Adams to give the city first offer on that property. So, and it would be on an as-is basis. And I've emailed the letter to all the council members. I received some other letters of support via email today, and I forwarded those on. And since then, I have other letters of support. One from Superintendent Lehman. I think all the council members already have the one from Hoosier Pattern and Keith Gerber. There's one here from Joe Elkins, who's the executive director of Adams Wells Manufacturing Alliance. And one from Trevor Hobbs from Adams County Economic Development Corporation. Unless I'm missing any, that's what I have. And I think it's all impressive and shows the definite passion that you all have for establishing a career center here in Decatur for workforce training. And I know that Vincennes University has expressed some very sincere interest in making that a home for them. I know that they don't want to own it personally, so that somebody else needs to own it, and that the city would be the best option for that. And while I too support all of this, in talking to Tim and talking to our council members, I think that most likely we will want to come look at it. I've seen it, I go there every Wednesday. But I would like our building inspector and our infrastructure manager and our operations manager to come take a very thorough review of the building and even maybe get up on the roof, look around, you know, everywhere, and just inspect the entire grounds. And then, you know, give us a little time and we will come back. Is there someone from your group tonight that wants to speak on behalf of all of us? Keith, did you want to say anything?
It's just a great opportunity for not only Decatur, but for manufacturers and any business in Decatur and around counties. You know, my money goes to Fort Wayne now, to Ivy Tech. For the last twenty-plus years, they've been at it best for instructors. So having it here would be a great opportunity for not only Decatur, but...
Where are we as far as a commitment from Vincennes? They have not committed anything, right?
We're looking for mass, we're looking for some numbers. Nothing concrete or specific, but an idea of how many employers would be willing to pony up in terms of employment upgrades, training schemes of that matter. I think Vincennes is looking at this as anyone would for an investment into the building and the hiring of instructors that it makes sense. The President Chuck Tomlin has been in discussions with both friends, but also with James Tople, my workforce director, and director of the Department of Energy and Climate. But Chuck had actually asked us for a letter of commitment or a letter of understanding. But given that the nebulous nature of the building and where it was going, we didn't know what organization was to make that letter. So as things get, you know, go forward, if they do, and the city takes ownership and we get a body in place to kind of oversee it, I think they'd be ready to jump into some sort of agreement fairly quickly before even showing, you know, showing how well the model works, but just as kind of first steps and agreement, first steps, and maybe wind off with that almost immediately instead of that situation gets resolved.
Okay. Comments from council? Craig, you have any?
I'm very supportive of this. I think it's a great opportunity for the city of Decatur to own the property in a holding company kind of a way. I think it's up to the steering committee, and we've discussed this, to come up with a business plan on how we're going to get commitments from industry and stakeholders. I think, and I think that the city of Decatur should take the lead on the building and the structure, at least for one year. And during the next three months of this process, prior to making the decision, the final decision on this building as a city, we need to see a plan from the steering committee, proposal, and a plan on how we're gonna make this happen, and a plan for the future so we can see workforce development happen there, so that it's not stress on the taxpayer for this, but I'm very positive about it. I think it can happen.
And you refer to the steering committee. That would be you gentlemen, and I believe the two of you, and James.
We're forming that at this time, and it's a very organic thing, and letters of commitment. We had a meeting three o'clock yesterday in Brent Lehman's office. I think with the support letter that Brent has shared with us from North Adams Community Schools, I think that we need to come up with a plan to get all the schools in Adams and Wells County involved in this. I think the hospital needs to be involved. I think that the major, the rainmakers, the stakeholders, and I think that this committee has the drive and the fortitude and the vision to get this done. And I challenge the committee to bring that back in the next month or so to help us make a better decision as a council.
I'm also very supportive of this, and there's multiple aspects to it. We're just now talking about for workforce development for such as Hoosier Pattern and other manufacturers. But there are some other steps too, that, and particularly Vincennes is interested in creating an avenue for career technical ed for our high schools, that there could be that type of training there. And then this past Friday, the visit that we made, Craig, you can, myself, and James Tople went up to Fort Wayne Enterprise Center on Wayne Trace, just off of Anthony. That is a entrepreneurial, a incubator-type setting, where this building has 55,000 square feet. I mean, there's a lot of space there. And this could be kind of a third leg of the three legs that we're talking about, which would definitely provide some income, but it's nurturing startup businesses, they would have to pay a lease, but it would be a minimal amount. And those businesses, as they gain success, who's to say they won't stay right here in Decatur? So that's another avenue that this whole project...
I've heard of business incubators, but I've never really seen one. And going there and seeing them firsthand was really pretty impressive. It really was.
It was.
I mean, they had everything from just offices to people that were doing manufacturing within that building, in different areas of the building. So it was pretty cool. Superintendent, you and I have talked, and I know you said we'll give you 90 days on the letter, and you'd asked, you know, if we could maybe speed that up, not make it 90 days. And I want to assure you that we'll do our best to try to make a decision here in the next 30 to 45 days at the most, hopefully a month, and I think if that's okay?
Absolutely. I think it's important that the city do their due diligence and their research. I think the whole idea, you know, when we were moving, getting ready for one campus and there were questions about our two elementarys, I don't know what those options would be. I have to tell you, I never once envisioned that we could have a huge impact in our area. But taking the time to look at it, as far as looking at the facility, whenever you want to try to do that, I would say reach out to Larry Cardy, and he can get Kenny Straub around, or whoever you think needs to be a part of that, and maybe be there and show every nook and cranny of the facility that anybody wants to look at. We'd be happy to do that, whenever that works. And I think too, as an educator, I think we do an outstanding job of giving kids opportunities to look into careers and prepare for the workforce. But the idea that now they could step into post-secondary training right here...
Some who wouldn't have done that.
Exactly.
Maybe now they would because it's right here.
Or they'll move away.
Right.
And with Susan, yeah.
And I think it's also, for as many years as I can remember, the whole area, we talked about workforce development and knowledge and that, and we talked, and we talked, and we talked. I think that the stars have aligned, and I think we have an opportunity to do something pretty...
Take some action here.
I would say that I'm completely for it, and I think this obviously fits in line with everything that we've been talking about. When you look at, it's almost like full circle, you go back to where like the whole connect careers thing started. It was how you make something out of nothing, how do you facilitate training when you don't have a facility, right? And the desire wasn't to have a facility at the time, but I think that's proven difficult, right? It's proven extremely difficult. And this, to me, is it. This is a huge opportunity. And it's not just, I mean, the training, but the, I think back to the conversations we had with, well, with St. Francis, with the NIC, with IPFW, with Ivy Tech when it was stellar, right? And trying to figure how do we have something exciting like that from an incubator standpoint? And we didn't really have the facility, we didn't have the space. It's all air. Like, I think this is huge for our community. I'll reiterate what I kind of said early on, is I would be concerned about what's our, the city's long-term responsibility for this. To your point, Craig, that, yeah, there needs to be a plan that shows how this can be sustained, doesn't mean that we're not gonna be part of it, but the responsibilities for managing tenants, maintaining tenants, all that type of thing. And to know who's the best entity to do that. Is it economic development? Is it, you know, is there a subcommittee that does this? But as long as, I think we have to be part of this, and we can provide the catalyst, absolutely.
And I'll interject.
I can interject one more thing, and I'm gonna give away from the normal property, but back to showing whoever needs to see parts of the building. I'm sure many people in the room are sitting here going, well, you have two of these elementarys. And yes, we have to offer both of them to the city. The city doesn't have to take you to one of, but we have to offer them. So another couple months down the line, we're going to be sending another letter. If you want to look at both buildings on a given day to kind of maybe better utilize people's time, we can certainly do that too, even though we haven't sent that letter yet.
Right. And probably we won't all be able to go at the same time, unfortunately, with our schedules or whatever, but...
So just listen.
Yep, we sure will.
One thing I would interject, and because we're taking the property as-is, that's one reason we want to take a good look at the building. We'll probably want to do a Phase 1 environmental assessment. I don't know if that's been done previously, but we probably should do that, just to make sure that we're not dealing with an environmental hazard on site, or that could have migrated from an adjoining property. So that's one of the reasons that I would suggest that we not make a decision this evening, but we'll certainly try to do that in an expeditious manner.
Do we know what kind of cost that would be?
I know that we're looking to try to use NERC on a couple of other properties. We have used them in the past. Jeremy, do you recall?
I don't recall. The last one we gave was back there on Shaffer.
On Shaffer Building?
It was consistent with, it was a forty reason.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
I don't know. Phyllis, do you remember offhand?
Could we ask you to check into that for us, Jeremy?
Yeah, I've already dealt with NERC on the middle property, so I can just add that to it.
We can also, Phyllis, you can check in, maybe just let me know and I can...
Yeah. Whatever. You rejoice my call.
Do you know, Brett, was there any kind of study done of the school itself in terms of any asbestos or anything like that in the past?
I know, I can't speak to everything. I know we have to do asbestos. Larry could provide you all that.
Yeah. If that's been done, if we could take a look at this.
It has been maintained. And we have to periodically update it.
Right. And there is asbestos in there that is on pipes, but it's all legal because it's...
It's encapsulated.
As long as you don't disturb it. The only time it would be an issue is if you disturb it.
Make it friable.
Correct.
Yeah.
But that is all, that's all up to speed.
Okay. Okay, so with that, while we're not gonna make a decision this evening, I want to thank you all for coming. And I would say, I don't even need any motion or anything on this, but this, that we will, as you said, Superintendent, do our due diligence and take a look at it, and we'll be in touch.
And that's great, and certainly we will answer whatever questions that maybe may arise.
Pretty exciting, I think.
We appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have an event formed for the 2019 Decatur Craft Beer and Barbecue Fest. Melissa, you have that?
I'm ready for something.
Yeah, really, I'm ready for a barbecue fest.
It's not complete because there's a lot of parts and pieces that we haven't done yet, but we just want to make sure we got our schedule on the plaza, so...
That's the biggest thing, is just to get this scheduled. What is the date this year?
It is Saturday, June 22nd, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. Okay, it's meant it's working on this year, and like I said, we'll update this form as we get more information. Map with your bullets, all that.
Why don't we not even approve that tonight then?
That's fine.
We'll do that when you come back.
I want to make sure we're, the plaza is available now, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
June 22nd, 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. You want to come on back up then, Melissa, and talk to us about Adams County's new mass notification system? I'll kind of surface this the best I can while she's getting that done. As I understand, this is something that our Adams County EMA is bringing to Adams County, and it would, to be part of it, you have to actually, I think, do all landlines automatically get registered to this?
Correct.
But if you have a cell phone, you need to get it registered.
Yes.
And what this will do is it will alert us, or it'll alert your cell phone of any emergencies in the way of a mass texting. So it's kind of cool, really.
This is a brand-new service that's provided by Adams County EMA, so I'm here speaking on their behalf this evening. This is my first time going through this, so if you have questions, let me know and we'll work through that. We're on the city's website, and I'm gonna take you how to get to this part to register. Right in the middle, we're at Adams County Mass Notification System. And I've already created an account, so I'm gonna log in and show you kind of a few parts and pieces to how this works. All right, and like the mayor said, it's just what you would think of it. It's an emergency notification system that you can sign up to make go to your phone, your email, it'll go to your fax machine, it'll go to your pager, whatever way you want it, whatever way you want to get information. You do have to go on and log on and have an email and create an account. That's step one. And some of the features that you can choose from, you can choose to get as many or as few notifications as you would like. So as you'll see on the screen, you can sign up for emergency alerts. If you sign up with this one, you're automatically gonna get emergency alerts. That means no matter what, you're gonna get a tornado warning on your phone if you get nothing else. Information notices, that's going to be if, let's say that the city of Decatur needs to close a road. We can go on there, and if you check information notices, you're gonna get that information. There's, you can opt-in to get, when they test the system. There's also some options when you look at weather, you can check if you want to get notified when there's an ice storm warning, if there's a thunderstorm warning. All these things you can check and get as many or as few notifications as you would like. On the right side of the screen, you can set it up to say, "Don't bother me." If there's an alert between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m., "Don't bother me." So it's not going off while you're asleep. So you can set that as well.
But this is a text message.
This is a text message.
It can be email.
Email, phone call.
It even can be a phone call.
That's what...
Move your landline.
Yes. Receive notifications via phone call, text messaging, email.
So if our landlines are automatically signed up, we have to physically go in?
That is the question that we have out to EMA as we're learning about how to do this. So we'll get back with everybody on that. The other interesting thing on here that I thought was pretty cool is you can add your location. So you see here where I work, you've got the plaza, I've got my husband's workplace, and I've got my house. So let's say that in my neighborhood where I live, there's a gas leak. They're gonna draw a circle around where that gas leak is, and it's gonna notify just the homes that need to be notified. So if my house is in that circle, it's gonna notify me. If there's a gas leak and my house isn't in that area, it's not gonna notify me. You can add up to five locations like this, so whether it's a school, or your workplace, or your home, or your grandma's house, you can select to get notifications by address. So that's kind of a cool feature that, you know, if there's a weather alert on the plaza or something's going on, we know, I'll be notified if there's something going on there. So again, this is very new, this is something that EMA has just rolled out. We will be educating the community and working with the community to get them signed up. If you need help, if you need someone to help, again, please let us know. This is very new, and we're working to get out to the community and share how this works and learn how this really works.
And I can see that...
This is the Cliff Notes version.
Yeah, I can see the need for people needing help. Is this the only place to go register?
There's also a link on the Adams County website that you can link to there, and then I've got handouts that have a very lengthy website address on it, but it's easier right now just to go to the city's website, the county's website, we'll link all that up on...
And you went to the city of Decatur, then you went to resources?
Correct. I'll go back and show you. We're at the homepage, you go to the resources menu, and then to links, and then right there under Adams County Resources, in the middle, is the Adams County Mass Notification System. And then that takes you right there where you would have to create an account.
Okay.
So like I said, you'll see more education about this as we work through it and answer some questions. But again, if you need help, or if you have a group, or a club, or somebody who would like a presentation to get in front of people and help them register, we're available to do that as well.
I think that would be good, once you're ready.
My first one is with the Lions Club on Thursday.
Once you're ready, I'm sure you'll promote this on Facebook too.
We're getting some information, postcards ready to go out, we could hand to people, and then, yeah, some Facebook education as we're learning how to use it as well.
Great. Can I share a funny story about this?
Yeah, go ahead. So, I don't know. Probably over 10 years ago, when this kind of was new, the texting out and mass notifications, the base was doing a, I was the duty officer, there's 6,000 people on base, and they did, they had an active shooter exercise, and so I had to send out the mass notification from my personal cell phone, which was a flip phone at the time, and you're pushing, right? And I did it all properly, but however the message ended, it was translated to an emoji for some people, and it was a wink. Active shooter, active shooter, take shelter.
Wink.
So half the base, whatever phone service they had, got, yeah.
You winked them.
I winked them, I was winking at them. I winked them, I was winking at them. Anyway. It's probably better than that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank the EMA for this also. That is everything on the agenda. Tim, do you have anything? Phyllis? Okay, the only thing I have to report from my report is that the city, the population grew by one this past week, as Tyler added some more inventory to the family with his fourth child, Tyler Eugene Folenkamp. So congratulations, Ty, Ty, not to be confused with Tyler. Congratulations with that. Department heads, Larry?
What do you think?
Jeremy?
Well, we have a couple of projects coming up that's out for bid. The.
It's going on now.
High Street's water drainage replacement project, 500 north, water drain extension, and some work out of 600 north that will tie the new water plant into the water tower. Those bids will be open on the Wednesday, 3rd March, or whatever.
Ty.
5th March. Also, at the same meeting, we'll be opening bids for the community crossing projects for the 18 streets that were funded during the community crossings program. This crazy weather that we've been having, potholes are showing up overnight, almost by the minute. We're out in the west of town on the dry days, and getting those potholes. If you see one, or there's, or you have a neighbor or a non-citizen favorite pothole, just call the office and let us know we're going to get it down.
And that is 724-3356, Bob.
Other than that, seems like we're following snow, so all we can do is water maniacs starting all over again.
Jeremy, somebody asked me, the road between DND and Pickway Road, is that city or county?
Belmont Road.
Belmont Road. There was a major, more than a pothole.
That was filled today, and that road is also included on the community crossings and projects, so that would be paid early, so.
Swallowed a car.
You know, we opened up asphalt lanes today, the numbers haven't looked really, really good, so we will be kind of assessing our streets over the next couple of months and coming up on the basis. You know, in general, for the rest of it, we'll be able to be generally, get the offers. Hopefully, if time works out, in March, a few of us will be going to pretty road schools for student education, so we can keep up on all our in-house services. Oh, yeah.
Bill?
Nothing.
Kevin?
Where is it? A squirrel?
Excuse me. I heard it earlier tonight, I think it was coming from that thing. What was the noise we're hearing back here?
There's one that's connected. There's one that's connected upstairs. It's just raining. I hear noises.
It sounded like a squirrel to me. It sounded like something in the wall.
There's one that's connected upstairs, squirrels, like, Jerry. Bill, we have to.
I was, squirrel in the Christmas tree.
I was the first one in this room tonight, and I came up here and I was standing right here, I was passing out papers around to everyone, also, that made that noise, I'm not going around here. What's back there?
I'm good.
Kurt, you got anything else? Mr. Hitchcock?
Nothing.
Don?
Cameras coming next month, we got a lot of sewer issues.
Carrie?
Nothing.
Bill?
Nothing.
Melissa? Larry, anything from parking wreck?
No, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to expand our workforce. It's something we've been looking at for a few years, so you've been doing terrific at all sides.
Yes, you have, yep.
And I just hope that once I get ready to hook my cellphone up, that I have somebody to be private with.
I know someone that can help. Council members have anything? If not.
I want to thank this crew that came in here that brought the idea of workforce development to fruition. I know it's been something we've been talking about for five, 10 years, and this thing is a great opportunity, and thank you for the time you guys put into this to make this happen.
What have you? We want you to pay the claims.
Thank you, Craig.
Well, Craig, you can, you got the approval. You got that very good.
Oh, yeah, you can, because you're on the board of works.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims. See what you guys get for sitting on your hands over there, that's what happens. Can't have a motion from Wiley to, and if it's second, for approval, pay the claims, all in favor.
Aye.
Phyllis, pay the claims.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn. You can help in that one.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. Motion to second, to adjourn, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.